Okay, good evening and welcome to the July 14th Palmer Town Council Meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which we stand. One nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is visitors' comments.
They're waiting on me.
Just a reminder, you have five minutes to speak and there is no back and forth dialogue. So if someone gets up from the public to make a comment, we're not going to have back and forth discussion because the item is not on the agenda.
Why isn't there discussion?
What?
Why isn't there no discussion? Why aren't you allowing the discussion?
With who? With the council?
Amongst themselves, do you have questions?
No, we'll put it on the agenda then. It's not an agenda item.
You're going to make it difficult.
Yes, I guess so. I'm not trying to, but...
You are.
No, I don't think so.
After I say meeting, you're making it, you're going to make it more difficult to have a discussion.
If there is a reason to have a discussion, I will put it on the agenda. It is not on the agenda, and I think that that's fair. Mr. Jaysek, did you want to speak?
People have a problem, they have to come and ask, we put it on the agenda. Is that correct?
I guess I'm going to wait and see what your comments are and then we'll go from there, okay? That's what we're going to do. I don't know what you're going to talk about, so I'm just saying that there is no interaction between members of the public. That's not...
Dying, dying, the, uh...
Other comments?
Opening, opening minutes, the opening readings or questions?
Agenda items?
For the general public?
For the agenda items?
No.
Public comments?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, but it's not on the agenda. You can have back and forth comments?
You can have discussion with the council like I always do. I'm talking about public comments right now.
All right.
Mr. Jaysek, did you want to speak?
I will after.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, today, I have a copy of the ordinances for multiple vehicles, public hearing, or something there, 137-5. Ordinances, I see appointed a committee for the ordinances. From what I've seen of ordinances, they're only useful if they're enforced. Many of the ordinances are never enforced. And my beef today is junk cars, unregistered vehicles, specifically in Thorndike. We have three locations, one on Church Street. That land is owned by whoever owns the Cascade Diamond property now. Across the street, parked in a bushes, you have an old electric company line truck. You have numerous vehicles in the bushes there and...
Still on Church Street?
That's on Church Street, correct. Also, the people that own the generating plant down off of Main Street next to the bridge, they also have junk vehicles, unregistered, in the bushes. They even have a old excavator parked there. A few years ago, they even had a bus there. For whatever reason, seems to me that, I don't know if they've been, we questioned that as far as paying taxes, but this ordinance here, 137, there's no teeth in it. Talk about public hearings, Board of Health, this and that. You've got to start issuing fines. That's the only way you're going to get any movement. And these aren't the only places in town. On Commercial Street, on two, I think it's probably two Commercial Street, there's three unregistered vehicles parked there. And many other places in town. Right now, this stuff comes under jurisdiction of the building inspector. And the Board of Health is involved here too, but these vehicles have been there for years. No action has been taken.
Okay, I wrote them down.
What else was I going to say? Oh, yeah. The last things we discussed there, Matthew here about the SCADA at the sewer plant. And he mentioned a million dollars. That would never cost a million dollars.
For the what?
SCADA for the sewer plant. Remember the last thing we discussed?
SCADA?
SCADA.
SCADA.
S-C-A-D-A, SCADA.
What was that? Refresh my memory. It's been a while. What's a SCADA?
Been a month.
I don't remember talking about a SCADA.
SCADA is communication electronically, say, between a substation and a main plant.
Oh, yes, we were talking about that. They said they were upgrading the substations and I said, well, that communicate if there was a problem. And you're saying no?
No, he's saying... Wouldn't be no problem, but you mentioned it was going to cost a million dollars and...
Oh, no, I think somebody from the waste treatment plant was here and they chimed in.
He didn't have much to say.
So...
That would be an excellent project for Pathfinder.
I agree. If we can use Pathfinder for whatever we can, but...
Which would save a lot of money.
Right.
Okay. Converse Middle School. It's been about 10 months now. We're doing surveys, we're doing deed searches. What's going on there?
I'll have an update in my town manager's report.
You what?
I'll have an update in the town manager's report.
Today?
We're, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll probably do it for now, thank you.
Apologies for my creaky legs. My name is Hank Sorette. I'm a lawyer and I represent Thorndike. And I wanted to come out and spend a couple of minutes with you to tell you how we got into the present pickle and what the plan is going forward. Thorndike entered into a lease with an outfit called Wingwell to redevelop their Building 10 into a marijuana grow facility. The lease was signed at the end of '21. In '22, the builder hired by Wingwell, a fellow called Biggs Waterman and his company, Waterman Excavation, began doing work on the property. However, they had never obtained a permit to do that. And your building inspector at the time, Ms. Weeks, whom I liked a great deal, I took her deposition a couple of weeks ago, tried to work with him. And it wasn't until June that he finally got his permit. But by the time he got his permit, all of the demolition you see now had already been done unlawfully. Well, instead of trying to be honest with us and working with us and doing the project, he walked off the job and took his subcontractor off the job, leaving a mess. Well, instead of trying to negotiate with us and trying to make something up to make something work, he brought in lawsuit and filed a mechanic's lien against the property. The mechanic's lien locks up the property and prevents us from doing anything with it at all. We are now two and a half years into litigation. And I am hopeful that at some point in the next few months, we'll be able to dispose of that mechanic's lien in the courthouse without getting into the weeds of the lawsuit in the time you've given me. When we get rid of the mechanic's lien and we're free to redevelop the property, I want to come back out and work with you to see what's the best way to redevelop this property. And Thorndike's interested in the community's interest, whether it's for mixed income or mixed-use housing or commercial or industrial, we want to find a solution that works for everybody. And what I want to tell you is that I can't talk a lot about the lawsuit, but there, I have enough documents been produced and my dining room table is groaning. And we've had, I think, about 14 days of depositions. We've got about five or six more to go, and then we'll get into motion practice. I will tell you that if Thorndike did anything wrong, they trusted Wingwell and Waterman too much. And what we now know is that Mr. Waterman did not demonstrate great integrity. He got a contract from United and from American Asbestos to do asbestos remediation, and he got a quote from them for a quarter of a million dollars to do that project. Well, he told Wingwell the job was a $500,000 job, intending to get paid and pocket the difference. Needless to say, when Wingwell found this out, they said they'd been double-crossed. Then, he never pays his subcontractor. This good friend of his who did the asbestos debatement for him, he just stiffed him and still wants to try and collect that money in the lawsuit against us. So that's a bit of the lay of the land. But I will tell you that there is an active hydroelectric facility there that's generating power, and there is an opportunity to do development on the property. And I don't want to overstay my five minutes, but I'd be glad to answer any questions the council has.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Can you explain how the mechanic's lien that prevents anything being done with the property prevents all of the unregistered vehicles that have kind of been just dumped there for several years from being removed?
I'm not aware of any unregistered vehicles, but the mechanic's lien has no effect on the vehicles.
Okay.
What the mechanic's lien says is a practical matter, is nobody will lend them money. So if we wanted to go and put a roof on that property, which we'd love to do, no bank will lend in the presence of a mechanic's lien. If we wanted to enter into a partnership with someone to develop that property, nobody would get involved with that without clear title. And without the mechanic's liens in place, we can't give clear title. Does that answer your question?
Well, it answers a question that I think a lot of people have about the redevelopment of the property, but I think there's other concerns. So a little bit of history about me. I live in a home that was built by the original mill owners. My husband's grandfather worked in the mill, you know, back in the early 1900s, or I shouldn't say early, mid 1900s.
You weren't working there in the early 1900s, were you?
Clearly. And so I take a lot of pride in, you know, the history that is within my husband's family of, in the role that the mills have played and the home that I live in now. And I take tremendous care of the home that I live in now and a lot of pride. But I think what just hurts my heart and a lot of people's hearts in Thorndike and all of the people who travel through Thorndike to get to UMass and other places in the area is just seeing a lot of the disrepair that the area has fallen into. And I think to Mr. Cosmeider's point earlier, having just vehicles with the door that's been open for months and seeing them fall into disrepair and rust out and just rot and the overgrowth, which they've, you know, been taking care of more recently. But it's still without fail every single year, just immense amount of overgrowth from weeds and decaying trees. And it's just, I think, really upsetting to people who have lived in Palmer their whole life or who might be new to Palmer or looking to make Palmer a home, to see, you know, how that makes Thorndike look when there are a lot of us who own property that take a lot of pride in the property that is just as old as the mill is.
I appreciate your interest and concern. I'm not aware of cars on the property. When I go, I haven't seen any, but that's...
Yeah, because it's all within the overgrowth.
It may be.
Or is it not actually, what is, how much of it is your property?
Well...
The whole Diamond Arsenal, because I know where he's talking, across the street from Diamond Arsenal is where he's talking.
They don't own all the property.
Yeah.
In the area, they own some of it.
So...
I know that there's one BMW parked in front of the building that is licensed and has tags on it, and I know that it's driven. And I know that...
The other factory down the street, the other side, that's not yours, correct?
I don't think so.
No, that's where, what's his name?
The one thing...
Where the crane and stuff is, that's not, what I'm saying is, a lot of this is probably not his control.
One of the things that Thorndike has done, and I'm sure you'll respect this, is they've maintained the fencing around the property to make sure that kids can't get in. Because public safety is important. And they're very vigilant about making sure that fence is properly maintained and locked.
Yeah, and there's even barbed wire across the bottom of the fence, which I'm always like, oh, it's going to be awesome the day that my dog's just sniffing and just rips his nose open because there's barbed wire at the bottom of the fence.
I'd rather have a dog get hurt than a child get in.
Yeah. A child's not going to get in like four inches underneath a fence.
I know there's been graffiti painted on the property, and I know that Celeste's gone down and painted over the graffiti several times, and they're doing their best with what they can do. But if we can get past the lien and now have a clean property that we can take and work with developers on, I think we could do a great deal to improve that property and work cooperatively with the town. And when we get to the point that the lien is gone, I'd like the opportunity to have it put on the agenda. We'll come out and talk about all the options and respond to as many questions as you have. If there are any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them. If not, I should yield the floor.
I would expect that based on the list that we got for unregistered vehicles, if there are any on your property, you probably will be hearing from the town regarding it. If not, then that's fine if they're not on your property, but we are going to make sure that the list that was given to us tonight is investigated just so you know.
I will ask the client to check the property to make sure there are no unregistered vehicles on their property.
Perfect.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one else.
Go ahead.
I have a question for you.
No, we're not doing questions.
The turbines are still turning and making electricity?
Yes.
What do they, she told me before, he did, what they do with it, I can't remember.
It's sold into the grid.
So they put it back in the grid?
It's sold into the grid.
Good.
But one of the opportunities that that provides is there are some potential developers who like the idea of having onsite power development.
Yeah, it's like free.
So for example, well, it's not free, but there's a cost to it. But one idea that's been knocked about is a data center. Because as you know, with the advent of artificial intelligence and computers, there's a huge demand for power. And if you have a facility that generates its own power, that's an advantage in negotiating with a partner. I don't know if you know this or not, but Microsoft has bought the old Three Mile Island nuclear plant. And is restarting it to power a data center in central Pennsylvania.
They need that much power? Wow.
Well, this is Microsoft. I hope we, you know, they're bigger than the entirety of central Massachusetts. But that's one of the opportunities that may be going on down the road.
Nice.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I thought this was going to be on the agenda.
What?
This may have been a discussion.
Nope.
Why wasn't it?
Did you have a question, Randy? Speak, yeah.
You've just got a snub job.
Well, I'm here to talk about the mill again, okay? Who's responsible for the environmental part of it? That stuff that's falling in the river? The owner?
We would refer to DEP and DEP would make that determination.
Okay. You know, this building didn't just happen overnight, okay? 20 years or more, you know? And nobody did nothing in the town to help the people that live around there. And you still ain't helping. Everybody on my side of that street, you know, we get to look at that. And, you know, it's not good. It's not good. And you people got to step up and do something. And if you're going to vote on other properties to do work in town and not have any control to say, okay, you've got to be bonded, you know, you're not, and not leave it the way Thorndike's going to be leaving. Like, if you do it like Converse, something happens there and it goes out. All those people there, you know? It's not just, right now, it's just us. It's the rest of the town and the master plan. Somebody's got to do something about it. I'd like something on agenda for the next meeting. And I'll talk to you, Brad.
Again, though, just, there's ongoing litigation. There's only so much we can discuss.
I'm going to have some people come in.
Anybody else? Sitting on? The item on the agenda is a vote on loan authorization 2025-03 for $2,228,000 for the wastewater treatment plant dewatering improvements. This is a bond order authorizing the borrowing of funds to pay costs of designing and reconstructing sludge dewatering facilities at the wastewater treatment plant. Again, the amount is $2,280,000, and it also rescinds the loan authorization 2025-02. That was approved on February 10th, 2025. This is a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, I just have, oh, it was just printed wrong on the agenda, the amount.
Oh, sorry, 2,280,000, thank you.
Yeah. I think that's what you said, but I was just reading it...
When I just read that, but I think the first time I did read the agenda, so thank you.
Is there any questions or can I make a...
You can ask a question.
All right. Is there also going to be a maintenance program on there? Because I've been listening to older people, if they're right or they're wrong, about maintenance in all our departments, not just them. Is there going to be a schedule of anything or a...
Yeah, no, honestly, we, this will feed into our normal routine preventative maintenance plan for the wastewater treatment plant. We got phenomenal miles during the last one. This is supposed to be put in place. It should be a quick return on investment and it'll be good going forward. So this is one I don't fear of for a lack of preventative maintenance. All right, cool. Short answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
This is to, this is the same thing we've been talking about for years, right?
Yes.
And it's just...
Yes.
And it was to replace the muffin grinder that was going out?
Close the water out of the...
Right, we don't currently have a central freezer, do we? This was in to replace something, wasn't it?
Yes, an older piece of equipment.
A muffin grinder, right?
Or whatever we were talking about? Yeah.
It just, it doesn't run as efficient as the new one will.
Correct.
Exactly. So the sludge that we put out will be much less and it'll be cheaper for us in the long run.
We're disposing of water, it's wet, so we're disposing of water, so this gets all the water out.
Squeezing the water out.
Right, so that the tonnage or whatever.
Whether it's a centrifuge or...
Drops off, exactly.
Unrelated, this one small detail, Mark's name is spelled incorrectly on the...
Barbers would be the one signing the official one.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well...
Just because Mark's not here.
Okay. Well, his name is still spelled wrong in the left-hand column of the...
On the header?
On the one, on the, yes, okay. It's just a little detail.
I make a motion, we accept.
Second.
Okay.
Call the favor?
Right.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on zoning amendment for two parcels off Palmer Street from rural residential to neighborhood business. And the second reading, is it the second reading first or... Okay, so this amendment is chap, code, sorry, amendment of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Palmer, Chapter 171 zoning be amended to change the zoning of MAP 29 Lot 1 and MAP 24 Lot 4 off Palmer Street from rural residential district to neighborhood business district. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at 6:56. Any questions from the council?
What part of Palmer Street or whereabouts?
Heidi, you want to come up?
So I believe there were some maps included. It may have been in the previous packet with the first read, but there are two parcels down the street here where Currently Tables is located. And then the parcel just, if you're looking at it from the street, just to the left, a smaller parcel, I think it's 3098, I believe.
Where that water or that little brick building is?
Yes, there's a, there's a foundation, I believe, back there.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Just stay here just in case on the next, since you're all, okay. All right, anybody else have any questions, public hearing?
That property, it's up in over there, is it the land under farming?
Oh, Chapter 61?
Yes.
So I believe that the parcel behind it may have previously been in Chapter 61. I don't believe this parcel is currently, however.
I think the one on the right-hand side, just after the sewer department's buildings down there.
Okay. Yes, on the other side of the street? Okay, gotcha. Yep, yeah, we're talking about right in front of the solar field that currently exists over there. Yep.
That used to be a house there years ago?
So, yeah.
Foundation there?
Yes, I believe so. I believe it used to be a house. That's 3098, I believe.
There's not much land here. An acre?
Nope, it was just included in this zone change.
Point 32, it was burned down years ago. When I got it on the fire department, there was a fire there.
Point 32?
I'm looking at the assessor's map.
Anybody else?
Is that grandfather or something that's there?
I'm not sure, Heidi would know better. So, so from what I know, right, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, is that Tables and the farm, the person who owns the farm is breaking off the piece of Tables property because they're trying to sell the farm, the house and the barn, right? They put in solar, I guess, what, last year or something like that in the backfields? And from that point, I guess if the property had sold with the Tables attached, it would belong to the house and everything like that. So they're just trying to break it out so that the business could continue running.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:59. Next, next we have a public hearing for zoning amendment for two parcels off Park Street from Town Residential to Highway Business. Second reading, this is ordinance 2025-04Z. The Code of Ordinances of the Town of Palmer, Chapter 171 zoning be amended to change the zoning of MAP 55 Lot 143 and 145 off Park Street from Town Residential District to Highway Business District. I will open the public hearing at 7 o'clock. Any questions from the council?
Where's that one?
Heidi?
I don't have a map either. Post office or Buddy's or...
It's right behind Buddy's.
BMW?
Yeah, so, and...
Penny Street?
Yes, right near Penny Street.
Oh, okay, I got you, I'm sorry.
And these parcels...
I didn't know that one, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Sorry.
Right here, Carl, they're landlocked.
Yeah, yeah.
There's these two that are landlocked and behind the businesses.
I've been working hard, the flea market's been in.
No worries.
So on the corner of Penny and Park...
Right behind Buddy's.
Behind the businesses, there's two strips of land there, yes.
Yeah, we have sort of a split zoning situation on a couple parcels.
Is it that wetlands in there?
Not according to the assessor's map, but Heidi may be able to answer that.
I'm not sure about wetlands, but the...
There's a brook that runs behind Buddy's.
Okay, yeah, so the purpose of this zone change was just to reconcile some split zoning that is existing on the parcels. So currently, there's already a business on these parcels, but the back portion of their land is zoned as Town Residential, and they came in for a lot reconfiguration to consolidate the two parcels into one. So it's just to make the zoning consistent throughout the whole parcel.
And that's not in my business, but are they just going to leave it a parcel or is it looking forward toward the future with the train coming in type of thing?
I believe they were interested in potentially having some storage, putting maybe a small addition with some storage. But other than that, there was no discussion of other uses there.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else? I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:01. Heidi? Okay, now we're in new business. Next is to approve the donation of an 1854 MAP of Palmer from Dan Belanger.
Oh, it is the map.
So this is a map that Dan had in his business on Thorndike Street, and he's graciously asked if the town would be willing to take it and...
The steward of it.
Yes, and display it here, so...
Yeah, this is identical one RA, don't we?
I was going to say, we have one just like it, don't we?
I mean, the ones...
I mean, the one on the back wall looks similar.
It was the town manager's office, I thought.
I'm not sure.
I was walking on both, but, yeah, when we auctioned it off, see if we could make the town millions.
Nope.
Well, do I have a motion to accept the donation?
Yes, second.
Motion by Matt, second by Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You send a letter to the.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes, thank you.
Very nice.
Yeah, now, fix, fix the building down there.
Next, we have board and the committee appointments. First is an appointment of Martha Mundell to the Council on Aging for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, and the appointment of Bridget Donato to the Council on Aging for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Do you have a motion to approve those appointments?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Matt, second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. Next, we have appointments to the ordinance committee. This is the committee that we are trying to establish under the charter requirements, um, Chapter nine, Section five A. Uh, we have three seats available, we have six individuals, so at our last meeting, we had already appointed some individuals to this committee. Um, at that point in time, we did not have enough interest to do all the appointments, and now, um, we have six individuals for three seats.
Can, uh, Brad, can you just remind me who was already appointed?
Yeah, let me go back to the last month's meeting, but, one second.
David, David Pasquini was one.
Okay.
I'd just like to, to say, though, that thank you to the people that reached out because they heeded the call of the need that we needed to, uh, fill those seats.
What are our June meeting or a Monday? Oh, this was, this was the first meeting.
Yeah, I know, I just opened up June's too. Um, for residents, it was Dave Pasquini, Lisa Newton, and Matt Warzik.
Okay.
And that left three, um, at-large seats for residents.
Okay. And then from the town side, is it just you?
It's me and then two council members.
Who's Matt?
Matt and Phil.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna.
How do you?
Yeah, I'm gonna just make a.
Pick from a hat, or, I mean, how do you choose? I mean, they're all.
Yeah, we don't know.
They all stepped up.
What do you mean you don't know anything about it?
I mean, who are these?
Was there?
It's in our, it's in our packet.
Oh, that's right, I did read some. The flea market killed me, sorry.
You're right. So if only we could do it one or two ways, we could look for a motion from each and then go around, yes or no, or we could do, each counselor gives me their top three, and I'll tally the total, and we'll go from there.
I should go by who, whoever was first.
Yeah, when you receive them, can we do that?
We can, um, but there was ultimately no deadline.
Right.
To put it right, so all these, every, all six of these came after the original deadline.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, looking at some of these letters, some of these people are already involved in other committees in town. Um, not to exclude them, but I mean, I would love to get more people who are not involved, involved, if that makes sense. Um, some fresh faces who wanna be involved in the town. While I thank people for reaching out, if they're already, you know, serving on a committee, or, or serving in a position in town, that's awesome, and we thank them, but I think that we should give other people some opportunity to, some new faces to, uh, try to see what's going on, and that's just my personal opinion.
No, I think that's fair. I mean, we do have, um, one person who applied who's only lived in Palmer since twenty twenty-two, so I think it might be good to get some, a different, you know, somebody with experience living in another community, maybe they've, have other, um, perspectives. Um, but other than that, we, we just have a good variety of experience, um, in the people who applied. So they will all bring different perspectives.
Mm-hmm. Actually, almost every single one of these people, now that I'm going through, actually are on some other committee or board, helping already, which is great.
I would say, let the town manager town manage and pick them.
This one's called out specifically.
Yeah.
Good try, Phil.
Can you not have all six?
Well, we already have.
There's only three, he only needs three more, and he got. Or if you have nine people from town, why can't they follow the charter? I don't know, maybe it's written.
Yeah, it's in the charter.
It's in the charter, yeah.
There's only so many, nine, I think, total or something, I forget. Right? All right, you wanna do it most in ways, you're saying?
We were just reviewing, I mean, if we wanted to appoint all of these individuals on it. Um, one of my fears is gonna be scheduling, but honestly, there's no difference between trying to schedule nine and twelve, and this allows for more people, if you're not able to make it, to have voices at the table, so we get close to nine as possible. Um, it is in, the charter does call out nine specifically, with six being residents, but.
But it doesn't say we can't have.
I'll make a motion to appoint all Josephine Fitzgerald, Candace Switlowski, Michael Graham, Rob, Robert Pavelis, Russell Raymond, and Donald Frederick.
A second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is to approve the police emergency telecommution, communication, telecommunications contract, U F C W local fourteen fifty-nine. Brad?
Um, so just a quick highlight on that, it was, uh, discussing executive session where we fell, we fell within our guidelines of what the recommendation was. Um, and we're good to go. It's a one-year contract. It does change the, uh, salary schedule a little bit, but again, it's within our, um, budget we had set aside for COLAS, and we're good to go on it.
Make a motion, we approve that.
Second.
Oh, wait, this has, it has to do with them, but a different question, should I wait?
Yeah.
Is it tied to the contract specific?
No, uh, financial. Oh, that's in the contract.
I, I guess it depends, is it?
Are we spending a lot on the sheriff's being here, more than a normal officer that?
Only separate from dispatch.
Yep, that's dispatch, we're.
Yeah, that's, yeah, figure that's why I'm gonna wait.
So make a motion, we accept.
I think we already had a motion and a second.
A second.
This was discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Who was the motion second by?
Matt was, or.
I think it was Matt and Jess, or Jess and Matt.
I was not, I was the second.
I thought so.
I won't fight her for it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the fiscal twenty-sixth town council meeting, schedule review, just proposed dates, which are all the.
I don't even remember doing this before, but I like it.
We did it last year, too. We did it since Brad's been here.
Yeah, the only one that changes is the October twentieth date.
Yeah.
Because of Columbia State, correct?
Perfect, 'cause I won't be here.
So you adjusted them for the holidays, I remember.
Yeah, it's already built in.
So is this, are we accepting this, or are we just reviewing?
I mean, we can make a motion to accept.
I make a motion, we accept it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next we have discussion on town council rules, so I would like everybody to review the rules, and we will, I'll have them back on the agenda for the next meeting. There may not be a, a need for any changes. We did do, like, two years ago now, a major overhaul of this.
Mm-hmm.
But if everybody could just please take a look, and, um, be prepared to discuss at the next meeting.
There's no summary of changes, huh? I see that there's just amendments and dates, but there's no summary of changes for each.
No, I'm, I, I think some of them say, like, when they were updated, they were, I think the last major change had to do with the public comment period.
It says tw- February twelfth, twenty twenty-four was the last approval date, revision approval date.
Yeah, but I think it was the public comment period because there was a change in the law regarding public comment, and so council, or the attorney, I should say, um, reviewed our, our, um, public comment period language, and then updated it according with the new changes to the law.
Okay.
Okay, next is a discussion on council subcommittees, um, so those are also in the packet. Unless there's anybody opposed, I will appoint everyone to the same committees as last year. Is everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um, subcommittee reports. Anyone?
Nothing.
Something else.
Yeah, I know, it's supposed to be the last agenda item. Town manager report?
No, the town's.
Huh?
The reorg.
Yeah, that goes last.
Yeah, that happens, that's the last thing of business we do.
Supposed to be.
All right, so first order of business is Converse Middle School. I finally was able to get an update from the group doing the survey. They have one or two field days left that are gonna be happening in the next week or two. That'll be turned over to us. We'll determine whether or not, um, what changes need to be made to the, the plot lines, so we can finalize that. Then my expectation is I'll need a month to finalize the RFP. We have the guts of it done, it's just us putting the final touches on it, and then it'll be out to bid. Um, so again, timeline-wise, you're probably looking at, um, honestly, like, October before it's fully out, probably six to eight weeks to issue the RFP, get quotes back, and then we'd be looking to authorize, um, somewhere in late November, um, or into December. And I will say, I did have an interested party two weeks ago, who I toured the building, so that makes four, uh, qualified interested parties that I've toured the building with. So, uh, there continues to be interest in the building, which is a nice thing to have.
Very good.
Any other questions on Converse specifically? No? All right. Um, on June twentieth, the library hosted its first movie night, um, in the parks at Converse Middle School. That brought about sixty people out. Uh, the one that was scheduled for last Friday at Hernevitz got pushed to this Friday due to, uh, inclement weather, um, so that'll be on this Friday at dusk. Um, Eversource started a gas improvement project this, last week, which is, uh, as of July seventh in downtown, which will run through early November. I did get a question in regards to that, that I forwarded on to a contact, um, at Eversource. What else have we got here? Um, in collaboration with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, the Town of Palmer was a group of about ten-plus municipalities who received access to a consultant to review townwide energy use and potential ideas for conservation. The contractor will be working with the, directly with the facilities director here in town. And, uh, in personnel notes, Holly Mann will be moving from her current position as the assistant town accountant, um, into the role of treasurer assistant collector as of August first, replacing Shelby LaMoth. Um, and, and for large items for employee recognition, um, I wanna congratulate two employees we have here. Danica Griswold was the recipient of the Nancy Glakowski Scholarship, which will cover her four hundred ninety-five dollar SHRM, um, certification test fee. And in addition to that, Tina Broman was awarded a four hundred dollar scholarship, um, for her, uh, for her to attend a, um, meet, uh, it's a, it's an annual, uh, larger organization. I think it's actually held in Nashville. She chose to do the remote version this year, um, which is happening actually this week, so she's taken that virtually for a national conference. Again, she was awarded the full four hundred dollars award for the registration. So congratulations to both. That was it?
Um, I just want to, um, thank Shelby LaMoth for her years of service to the town, um, and wish her well in future endeavors. And congratulations to both Tina and Danica for, um, receiving those.
And I actually forgot one, I apologize. Um, the sewer superintendent, um, sent me a request to revise our abatement policies effective as of seven one twenty-five. Um, so I have approved those moving forward. It's not anything the council approves, it's directly the town manager, um, so we'll be posting them online. Some of the highlights are, um, the, the major changes, I should say, is the senior abatement, which moves from what used to be a flat fifty dollars to a ten percent, um, per E D U annually. So again, it helps our seniors out a little bit more. Um, and then in terms of a vacancy abatement in a commercial property, uh, vacancy abatement, both will be a reduced, uh, thirty-three percent per E D U for each building up to it. So it does change the, the rules of the game a little bit, specifically for vacancy abatements. We do put a cap now that you are only eligible to file for that for two consecutive years. Because again, if you have a, if you have a, a residential property that you're not looking to advertise in two years, you're not looking to advertise it and, and put it on the market. So we felt that was in fair interest, and we did a lot of this of, of research through other policies, um, that I feel pretty confident in it. And again, these will all be updated and put online.
Hmm, yeah, and we want to discourage vacancy as much as possible, so.
And like, as you guys know, there's a lot of fixed costs that go in behind the scenes, whether you use the utility or not, and this puts back, in my opinion, a fair estimate on, uh, you're paying for your fair value, whether you use it or not.
Mm-hmm.
I have a quick question for you, Brad.
Yep.
It's not in your report, but where are we on the aggregate for electrical, electric?
I gotta follow up with them, yeah. We've, the state supposedly streamlined the process, but we're now entering probably like a nine-month mark, I'd say, from when I initially reported to you guys, so I'll follow up with them.
I'm just curious, yeah, thanks.
Yep. The last time, though, I think I mentioned this, was the takeaway was, due to electric rates, it may not be advantageous for us to look at, but I still wanna provide that feedback, just to let you guys know where we are.
Sure.
Anybody else? Misselenius Correspondence? Anyone? So I did receive, um, an email today regarding the gas line, um, that's going in. Um, I did re, um, forward that message, or that email to Brad to respond. Uh, also, I believe we all received an email regarding the exemptions, um, income and asset exemptions for real estate taxes, uh, that was earlier in June. Uh, I did respond to that individual. I am looking into it. I did go back and watch the meeting that she referred to. Um, at that meeting, um, we clearly indicated that we wanted, um, the manager to come back at that point in time. Um, so the assessor and the manager to come back and, um, give us recommendations for the income levels uh, for an exemption. That did not happen, but we have had turnover in both of those positions since that meeting. Uh, so my goal is to work with Brad and, um, Rachel and have something before the council at the, uh, September meeting, so that we can get those income levels updated, so that they can go into effect for the tax bill that will go out, the actual tax bill that goes out in, in January. Okay, so we're doing that. All right. Counselors' roundtable?
Good.
I'll be here.
There were two upcoming events, um, on our agenda. One is a reminder that on August first, the first quarter real estate and personal property tax bills will be due, and the second is on August fifth, uh, police department will be holding National Night Out from six to eight P M. in the Palmer Police Parking Lot. Okay, nobody has anything else?
I have, quick, I just wanna thank everybody who came out to the three-yearers Chamber of Commerce event last Friday night at Divine Mercy. Um, if you weren't, or didn't, I should say, have a chance to make it, then there is another one on August eighth. So you can try to catch that one on Friday night, so.
Parking was much nicer.
Yes, parking was much nicer, it flowed a lot better, I was told, yes. And we thank the church for letting us use the property, yes.
And we thank the church for letting us use the property, yes.
It was, I think it was a good location. Nobody else?
It's just the, the lemonade stand, uh, was a success. And I drive through Connecticut to get to Hartford, better prices than mass, and I saw other towns doing it too.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, so it goes, they go all over, it's cool that young people learn about business, yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, next we have council reorganization.
Yep, so I will take a motion, um, for council president.
I make a motion to, uh, appoint Barbara Berry as council president.
Second.
Do you need a second, okay.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any animus? All right, Barbara, all yours.
Okay, I will take a motion, or I will actually make it, how about that? I'll make a motion to, for, uh, Jessica Ferry to be the vice president of the council.
Yep.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll make a motion for Mark, for Mark Kochi, for the, um, clerk.
I'll second.
Whatever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Favor, yeah.
Okay. All right, we are going to adjourn from formal session, we are going to go into executive session, we will not return to open session. Uh, we are going into executive session under Mass General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and this chair so declares. This is for union negotiations, Palmer Police, NEPBA local zero seven one, and the DPW and Administrative Unit, UPSU local four two four M. We will also be in executive session under Mass General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, number six, which is to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. If the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And that is for, for Shearer Street, I so declare on both, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Jess, second by Matt, we'll call vote, Matt?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, thank you, good night.